Okay, let's call it order the city council meeting for Monday, August 1st at 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I'd ask that we all just rise for our pledge of allegiance. And, I'm sorry, roll call? We gotta do a roll call first?
Okay. Brown?
No, we don't. We do that second. Mike, you got me screwed up.
Oh.
All right. So, the meeting's been called to order. We're gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance. Alderman, Mueller, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if the clerk could call the roll, please.
Brown?
Here.
Rosado? Rosado? Rosado, he is absent. You can check absent. Stark?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan, absent. Holman, absent. Mueller?
Here.
Botterman?
Here.
Serrano?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Edit?
Yep.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is items to be removed, added, or changed. I know of none. Does anybody have anything? Okay, move on then to item number five, which is the appointment of the new city administrator. You've all received a memo from the mayor on this. So, he's asking for confirmation of appointment. And, as you know, she is, Laura Newman is replacing the city administrator that was with us for 18 years. She will be recognized at the next city council meeting. I believe it's on the 15th when the mayor's here for that reason. He wants to be here. So, could I ask, I'll make a motion for confirmation of appointment of Laura Newman to the city administrator.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion by Botterman, second by McFadden. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Welcome, Laura, officially. Okay, we'll go on to the consent agenda, which is item six. Alderman, McFadden.
Yes, the consent agenda reads as follows. Approvals: the July 29th, 2016 payroll in the amount of $788,581.78. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $880,972.25. The city council minutes for June 20th and July 5th, 2016. Resolution 16-64R authorizing execution of a master services agreement with EX2 Technology. Resolution 16-62R accepting a plat of easement and abrogation for Batavia Business Park lots 87 and 88. Ordinance 16-42 annexing rear parcels of 1321 through 1361 Chautauqua Street. Ordinance 1645 annexing rear parcel of 958 Millview Drive. Ordinance 16-44 surplus police vehicles. Ordinance 16-67R approving contract with SAC Construction LLC for tri-city sanitary sewer lining program in an amount not to exceed $192,683.40. Resolution 16-68R, bank agency resolution. And, resolution 16-69R, appointment of FOIA officers. Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by McFadden, second by Stark. Roll call.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serrano?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. Next item is item seven, which is matters from the public. If there's anybody in the public wants to, would like to address the city council tonight, now would be your time. So, please come on up and give us your name for the record and use the mic so we can get you on tape also.
Good evening. My name is Scott Hegeman. I am resident of Batavia for the last 59 years. I currently live at 441 Stewart, up off of Red Ant Road. I'm here tonight for the fifth time on Friday. My basement flooded, compliments of the city of Batavia. There's a court that was built directly across the street from my home, probably some 25 years ago, when Ted Bergerson was still involved as the engineer. This court has no drainage sanitary grates, so all of the water out of that court runs right up my driveway and into my house. For, like I say, this is the fifth time on Friday that it's flooded. Last year it flooded. Every time my house gets damaged, it's costing me between $10,000 and $20,000 because you can't even claim this to the insurance company anymore because they're gonna drop me like a hot potato. My concern is, I keep getting the same story. We're looking into it. We're looking into it. I was told last year I was second on the list for repairs. Well, what is the repairs? Is it adding more storm sewers? I don't believe that's it. I believe it's time that the city council takes this seriously before lawsuits are filed against you, or even worse, somebody gets hurt. This is, this has just gotten really old, okay? I was on the fire department in this town for 25 years. I used to take care of people and come home to my basement being flooded. This is wrong. It's time the city council does something about this. One suggestion, you wanna buy my house, tear it down, and make a retention base, and I don't really care. Because right now, that's basically what it is. It's a large swimming pool for the city of Batavia when it rains. And it's not just the big rains. Wednesday of last week with the rain, I had water up my driveway to the point I was having to squeegee it away. But when it comes in volumes like it did on Friday, it stepped back and let it go because there's not a darn thing we can do about it. That's really all I have to say. I'd like to talk to my alderman later about this. I've talked to Mayor Schelke about it in the past. I've talked to Raj. I've talked to Andrea. And I'm not getting any, any solutions. So, I would ask that the city council takes it upon themselves before legal matters get thrown into your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary, do you, are you familiar with this property at all that you'd like to comment tonight, or?
I can. I mean, it's, it's one of several projects we have as far as our prioritization. And we brought a whole list of prioritization to city council. And, you know, we have funding this year for engineering projects and, you know, getting projects up and going. And that's, that's where we're at at this point. We had, I think, a little bit over $8 million worth of projects and $400,000 worth of funding this year. So, it's, it's just a matter of trying to prioritize projects that impact the most, largest number of homeowners first. That's kind of what we focused on. The Ward 1 area had, I think, over 50, 60 complaints as out of the June storm. And then, of course, the Area 2, Area 3 combined sewers, again, a number of complaints. So, we do have to focus on those areas where there are the largest number of residents that are impacted by a single problem first.
Thanks, Gary.
So, in other words, you're saying that one homeowner's not important in the city of Batavia?
No, that's not what we're saying at all. We're just saying that we have to manage the public's money as best we can, and we need to prioritize. And one way to prioritize that we brought to city council was to work on projects that affect the greatest number of people first.
So, that's why I'd probably never buy a house in the city of Batavia again. My house is flooding. I think you need to take a little priority and look at individual people. Otherwise, you can spend $10,000 to $15,000 every time I flood to reimburse me.
Scott, you know, I talked to you a little bit before the meeting, and I would agree with you. I think you should probably talk to your aldermen so they can get more intimate into the details of what's going on, on your property. Stop out, take a look at it, to, you know, visually see what's going on. Then they can meet with staff also. We did, you know, your piece of property particularly, I can say that, in all honesty, I'm not familiar with it. We did look at all the things that staff brought to us when we tried to prioritize the $400,000 that we had to do the most good, as Gary just mentioned. But that doesn't mean that we can't take a look at it again. If yours is an area that is getting hit every time we have some rain, maybe that kind of slipped through somehow where we didn't recognize that when we evaluated it. I don't really know. But it doesn't hurt to take a look at it again, is what I'm saying. So...
I agree. And I can show you on video Raj driving up and down my street four times, looking at it on Friday.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Does anybody else in the public have anything? Please come on up and give us your name.
Hi, my name is Megan McCarthy. I live at 622 Wabonzi Trail here in Batavia. I, like Scott, am having a water issue. There was an infill property built next door to me on an empty lot. And the height of the foundation was allowed and approved by the city against international building codes and city codes, but somehow approved. And at this point, I too am flooded every time it rains, whether it's a big rain or a small rain, because of this. So, I'm looking for some help from the city. I've been talking to the engineering department since July of 2015 about this issue. I have emails going back that far, as well as photos of the lot. And, so I'm looking for some help.
Could I ask you, Mrs. McCarthy, when you have flooding, is it just in your yard, or do you get water in your basement?
It comes into my house. I've lived in the house for seven years. I've never had any water in the house until this construction was completed.
Okay. Gary, I'm sure we could take a look at her issue again, too, right?
We can. There's, we're still working on the final grading plan for the house next door. So, the new house that was recently constructed.
Okay. And I would maybe suggest talk to your alderman also and have them stop out and take a look at your property so we can visually see what is really going on there as well.
Well, I did talk to my alderman before the meeting, and he went out at the request of the, the new homeowners who have built the home there because they didn't want to put a sidewalk in. However, that was, I don't know, when are you thinking?
That was about a year ago. Dave, it's a friendly reminder. We had, council had quite a bit of discussion on the property next door to her address. And this is the property where the young couple came in initially regarding the sidewalk requirement-
Right, okay.
-on Wabonzi Trail. But at that time, they had mentioned some of the challenges they were having with the foundation requirements and meeting code compliance at, at the address. At that time, we had heard that the neighbor, in this case, Ms. McCarthy, was experiencing these issues. So, her point of this being, of going on for some time is correct. And, and staff has been working on this. And I know email was distributed, I believe it was Friday afternoon, saying the final grading plans had, had arrived that afternoon. So, there is, I would imagine, some time to process and look at those plans. But you're, you're suggesting, and Laura and I spoke with the resident just prior to the meeting, we're going to try to schedule a meeting, hopefully involving Lucy as well and staff, to take a look at this again and see what might come of it.
Okay, very good. And I, I know this doesn't help you feel any better, but we do recognize that there are areas in town that have got a problem. We are taking them all very seriously. But as, as Gary Holm just mentioned, you know, we've only got a limited amount of funds. It's how we spend it, where we spend it, and everybody's property is just as important as everybody else's. So, we have to try to figure out where we can spend the money the best way, be prudent with it.
Well, I, I agree with that. And as a taxpayer, I like to see my money spent wisely. However, since I've been in touch with the engineering department since June of 2015 about this issue, and it's been allowed to continue this long, and continually changed, and I've been assured that I wouldn't have a problem and everything would be fine, and it's not, I think that's a problem for me, as well as the city.
Be in touch?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else in the public have anything they'd like to address us on? Okay, then we'll move on to item number nine, which is a proclamation recognizing Sonoco Alloy Emergency Response Team.
Number eight.
Item number eight, Chamber of Commerce. Holly?
I know water is really important, so I will, I will go as quickly as I can here. But thank you very much for giving me an opportunity, even though you tried to skip me, to talk a little bit about the Chamber of Commerce. We have a lot of stuff coming up, and again, I'll try to be brief. On August 8th, we have the legislative forum. We brought in the King County Department of Transportation. I think it's probably a good time since they've got a lot going out on Kirk Road right now. But they'll be coming in to talk about upcoming transportation improvement projects, and that will be at the city council chambers here on August 8th from 3:00 until 4:00 PM. That is open to the public as well, anyone who wants to come and learn a little bit more about what's going on with that. On August 9th, our Batavia Women in Business group is having a progressive luncheon with the Aurora, Geneva, Oswego, and St. Charles Chamber. And that will be at Orchard Valley Golf Course again on August 9th from 11:30 until 1:00 PM. August 17th, we have our networking event, and that will be over at Pell Joey's on August 17th from 4:00 until 6:00. On August 19th, from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM, we have a special legislative luncheon. We have partnered with the Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce to bring U.S. Senator Mark Kirk. So, he'll be coming to present. Unfortunately, he's not coming to Batavia, but he will be at the Hilton Lyle Naperville, the Hilton Lyle Naperville, August 19th from 11:30 to 1:00. On August 25th, from 11:30 to 1:00, we have the legislative luncheon. We've brought in Director of the Illinois Department of Labor. His name is Hugo Chaviano. And I think I mentioned this last time. I hope you wear an ascot, because you have to when you have a name like that. And he is going to be speaking on minimum wage, overtime rules, and workplace safety, all very important things to our local employers. And then we have on August 30th, our Eggs Benefit, which is where we talk about all the great things that you could be receiving as a member of the Batavia Chamber. So, that's all I have for you. I want to say thank you to the community for the huge turnout for, on Saturday, we had our chili cook-off. I'm very proud to say that two local people won. We had a CASI, which is the Chili Appreciation Society International Chili Cook-off here in Batavia this past Saturday. A local gentleman named Bill Pearson, who used to organize the entire event, he won this year for the first time. And the People's Choice Award was awarded to the chef at The Range. So, if you really, really like chili, then our local readily available chili will be at The Range Grill and Tap.
Very good.
Anything else? Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Holly? Okay, thank you, Holly.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the next item is item number nine, which is a proclamation recognizing Sonoco Alloy Emergency Response Team. Chief Jankowski, were you gonna introduce these individuals?
Good evening, council and staff. On June 21st, around 5:40 AM, the Batavia Fire Department responded to 1500 Paramount Parkway Sonoco Alloy for a person that had fainted. Tricom Dispatch Agency began emergency medical instructions and advised the fire companies that CPR had been initiated. And I just want to acknowledge Tricom for their professional dispatching. And Marge? Am I not Marge?
Marge or Sergio?
Okay. Marge from Tricom was actually the one talking to Sergio, who was doing the other instructions with the team. So, just wanted to acknowledge them. Background, the Sonoco Alloy Company has been established, has a established and well-trained emergency response safety team on each one of their three shifts. The Sonoco Emergency Response employees acted quickly and saved the life of a coworker. The Batavia Fire Department wants to extend a congratulations and a job well done to Sonoco Company and the members of the in-house emergency response team. The city is prepared a proclamation to acknowledge their efforts. Mr. Brown, if you would, please?
Sure. I have a proclamation here, and it reads as follows. A proclamation recognizing Sal Chavez, Sergio Gabriel, Don, or I'm sorry, Bob Dos, Luis Martinez, Nick Sotelo, Jerry Chavez, and Deb Koster for actions taken to save the life of a coworker. Whereas on June 21st, 2016, a life was saved at Sonoco Alloy in Batavia, Illinois, due to phenomenal efforts of onsite EMRT, which is the emergency response team. Whereas at 5:40 AM, after a bike wide, bike ride to work, a senior associate suffered a heart attack in a locker room and went into cardiac arrest. Two EMRT team members in the locker room at the time of, at that time, called other EMRT team members and immediately began lifesaving efforts. Whereas Sal Chavez, a die-cutting helper, began guidance to direct the lifesaving measures. Sergio Gabriel, a press man, called 911 and stayed on the phone with the operator. Bob Dos, a press man, and Luis Martinez, a maintenance lead, immediately opened the associate's airway and began chest compressions. Nick Sotelo, a press man, went to get the AED device. Jerry Chavez, a second press man, stayed at the associate's head while chest compressions were administered. Deb Koster, the safety and human resource coordinator, calmed the rest of the plant and provided vital information. Whereas after initiating CPR and administering a shock with the AED, the associate regained his heartbeat, and moments later, the ambulance arrived, transporting the associate to the hospital where he had made a full recovery. Whereas the caring attributed and acting without hesitation, saving the life of a coworker, given the senior associate a new lease on life. Whereas the Sonoco Alloy Company, under the leadership of President and CEO Jack Sanders, is commended for the establishment and continued support of a well-trained emergency response team. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed that the first day of August 2016 by Jeffrey D. Schelke, mayor of the city of Batavia, that the citizens of Batavia express their sincere gratitude and warm appreciation to the Sonoco Alloy Emergency Response Team for the efforts to assist a coworker in need. Signed, Jeffrey D. Schelke. And the mayor was certainly wanting to be here tonight to, to give this proclamation, but he was not, not able to make a back in time for the meeting. So, I want to thank you on behalf of the mayor and behalf of the city council for everything that Sonoco has done to create the emergency response team in order to provide the training that was necessary in order for all of you individuals to be able to do what you did to save this man's life. I think it's just so important, and it says so much that any company of any size, whether you have five employees or whether you have 500 employees, that you're trained properly so that you can help save somebody's life if necessary. So, thank you very much for all your efforts. Okay. Thank you. Have a good night. All right, next item is item 10, which is Resolution 16-61-R, a resolution expressing official intent regarding a certain expenditures to be reimbursed from proposed Washington/Wilson Tiff District Funds. Alderman, Stark?
Yes, I have this. Tonight, we have before us Resolution 16-61-R, a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from the special tax allocation fund from proceeds of an obligation issued, if any, or other resources from such fund in connection with a proposed tax increment financing district commonly described as the Washington-Wilson District redevelopment project area. And this goes back to the July 12th COW meeting, when we talked about Washington-Wilson Tax Increment Financing District eligibility findings. And with a Tiff district, there are certain bills that come along with it. And so, if it's approved, then the Tiff district would be able to reimburse the expenditures by way of this resolution. So, Chris Aiston, is there anything special you want to add to that, or?
No, thank you.
Okay. So, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McFadden, second by Wolf, to pass Resolution 16-61-R. All those in favor, or any, sorry, I have to put my glasses on. I think I see you waving. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to make the comment that I guess what we're doing tonight is, you know, the, the developers has put in $250,000 of their own money to, to start this process. And so, we're just telling the developer that we, we support that also, and we're, we're making a commitment to them also that, as far as we can make a commitment, that, that we're behind us as a council. And that's what I think we did. So, just wanted to get that out there.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion by McFadden, second by Wolf, to approve Resolution 16-61-R. Roll call, please.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serrano?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. Thanks, Chris. Resolution, item number 11, Resolution 16-66-R, authorizing task order number 21 for RJN Group for sanitary sewer infiltration and inflow work for the amount not to exceed $58,450. Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Dave. This is Resolution 16-66-R. As Gary alluded to this evening already, you know, we, we've kind of prioritized some of the issues regarding the June 15th, June 15th, 2015 flooding. And this is one of those prioritizations coming to us right now. Basically, we're, in the first ward, there was a lot of sanitary sewer backup. And so, we're, we're looking to see where we can relieve some of that problems. And there's a lot of INI, some infiltration from our storm sewers, and just water seeping through the ground, getting into the sanitary. And there's a lot of pressure on our wastewater treatment facility with all this. And so, this is basically gonna do a study that, that tells us, you know, where this water's coming and how to address our sanitary sewer systems to, to minimize the infiltration. And that's pretty much it. So, any comments from anyone? Any concerns? I'd make a motion that we pass Resolution 16-66-R, task order number 21, sanitary sewer evaluation survey for the Cherry Park Sewer Basin.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Fisher. Roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serrano?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. Thanks, Chris. Resolution, item number 11, Resolution 16-66-R, authorizing task order number 21 for RJN Group for sanitary sewer infiltration and inflow work for the amount not to exceed $58,450. Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Dave. This is Resolution 16-66-R. As Gary alluded to this evening already, you know, we, we've kind of prioritized some of the issues regarding the June 15th, June 15th, 2015 flooding. And this is one of those prioritizations coming to us right now. Basically, we're, in the first ward, there was a lot of sanitary sewer backup. And so, we're, we're looking to see where we can relieve some of that problems. And there's a lot of INI, some infiltration from our storm sewers, and just water seeping through the ground, getting into the sanitary. And there's a lot of pressure on our wastewater treatment facility with all this. And so, this is basically gonna do a study that, that tells us, you know, where this water's coming and how to address our sanitary sewer systems to, to minimize the infiltration. And that's pretty much it. So, any comments from anyone? Any concerns? I'd make a motion that we pass Resolution 16-66-R, task order number 21, sanitary sewer evaluation survey for the Cherry Park Sewer Basin.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Fisher. Roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serrano?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried.
there are no damages, just that everything is up to code and up to, I guess, working order. That when we, we put the new road in, new sidewalks in, we don't have to dig them up in a few years to repair anything. So, it's going to be due diligence, where they're going to be going into, do the lateral services and do the mains on, on the sanitary and water and storm. So, with that, I'd make a motion to pass Resolution 16-65-R, Main Street Clean and Televised Sanitary Sewer Line Project.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Wolf. Roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Otterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. Next item is item 14, Administrator's Report.
Good evening. For the Administrator's Report this evening, just wanted to inform you that we will be contracting with a company called Global Aerial Video for what I think is a very cost-effective rate of $3,750. This company produces five-to-seven minute video. It's five-to-seven minutes is the, the whole sum total of the video that they would be providing us, that will be a beautiful overview of our city to present to prospective businesses, prospective residents. It's being shown time and again that when businesses and those who had moved to our communities are most moved by the video type of information that is presented to them. And so, we're thinking we're going to have this five-to-seven minute video that can then be what they call "chaptered" for different purposes. And we were very impressed both by the quality of the other sample videos that they showed us, but also by their list of clientele as well. The Hilton Resorts utilize this company to produce their videos. Second, with the storms that we had last week, I think it sort of brought to the forefront the exceptional job that the workers in Public Works do when they're presented with a crisis, like a power outage and a water main break that we had last week. I think it's tremendous that Public Works, through the efforts of staff, were able to repair that water main in just one day. And being a resident, I know that most power outages, our power comes back online within one hour or two hours. And I, I think that's really impressive. I just wanted to recognize them. So, if you pass that along, Gary.
Thank you.
One area of concern that residents have, though, are, is information that they're provided in the event of a power outage. Once a power outage is reported, our police department is absolutely flooded with calls, because this is the mechanism that we provide for residents to report a power outage. And also, the only means we have of communicating back to residents about when things will come back online is a recorded message. So, internally, the staff are going to be looking at, in the short term, a better means of communicating with residents that a power outage exists, and what area of our community is affected, and how long that they can expect that power outage to last. So, we'll report back to you on what we come up with as potential interim solutions to that problem. On Friday, I just also wanted, Chief Shira is not here this evening, but I was invited by the police department to attend an extremely important training that they were holding that was called Shoot, Don't Shoot. And definitely very, very much a timely issue for all police departments. The Batavia Police Department is, has a membership in a training program that allows them to borrow training programs for a couple of days at a significantly less cost than it would take for us to invent, invest in these materials ourselves. And this was an amazing, so they set up the entire roll call room as a simulation, and it used replica locks, similar to those that are issued to the police officers, which shot air at a screen. It could record where they shot, how many times they shot, which of those were non-lethal and which of those were lethal. And the two officers who were being trained went through seven different and extremely difficult scenarios. So, we live in a community where we hope that our police officers are never going to have to be put in the position of making the judgment of shoot, don't shoot. But I think that training programs like this are very essential and a wonderful opportunity for them to hone these skills should they ever be needed. Lastly, I'd just like to remind everybody of the upcoming brush pickup dates, August 8th for the east side, August 15th for the west side. Following that, September 12th for the east side, and September 19th for the west side. And residents should have all their brush out to the curb by 7:00 a.m. of Monday of those weeks. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. And does anybody have any questions for a city administrator?
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next item on the agenda is the committee reports. Alderman Stark is co-chair. Would you present the community development agenda?
There is nothing on the community development agenda for tomorrow evening's COW, and then there are no meetings, no agenda items into the future that I have record of right now.
Okay, very good. Alderman McFadden, in Alderman ATAC's absence, do you have government services?
Yes. Tomorrow night, the COW tomorrow night, there will be a discussion on changes to the health insurance risk pool for our employees' health insurance program. And that's all I have.
Okay, Alderman Wolf?
City Services has nothing on the agenda.
Nothing on the agenda. Alderman O'Brien?
Public Utilities has nothing on the agenda.
Okay, Wendy, is it, since tomorrow night, all we have is your update on the insurance. Is it imperative that we meet tomorrow night on this, or?
We do have some, if we're going to make a decision, we have some timelines. We need to meet.
So, we do need to meet on it. Okay, very good. All right, so tomorrow night's meeting is at 7:30 for the purpose of review of the insurance. Okay, thank you. Other business? Does anybody have any other business? Dan?
I just, I have a question for, for Gary. Given that we have some residents complaining tonight about water issues, is it appropriate to, for us to revisit the prioritization list? Is there anything that we could be doing better? Do we need to talk about raising funds? You said it was $8 million worth of projects and a few hundred thousand dollars in funding. So, is, maybe it is appropriate to revisit?
You know, we, we've already essentially gotten to the 90% point on the west side. Combined sewer project, Main Street, with engineering, that's a $2.5 million project. Four hundred thousand dollars a year, we're, we're six years just to pay for that one project. And that's not doing anything else in town. The east side drainage study in Ward 1 just hit our desks this morning for a pre-final draft, so I don't have any final numbers on that yet. But that's also going to be, you know, good drainage projects throughout the east side. So, again, dollar value projects.
Is, is the stuff that we approved tonight good news for people along Mahoney Creek? I would assume that we're doing well in the first-
We haven't started Mahoney. Mahoney Creek was not part of this.
Right, but I mean, if we're working on things in the first ward, knowing that some of that water does flow into Mahoney Creek, I would think that that would be good news. That's, that's the neighborhood I grew up, when I was a kid.
This goes southeast, this goes towards Indian Fermi Lab.
Right. Oh, that doesn't even go that way.
We've touched the Mahoney Creek area, yeah.
Okay.
I guess that goes back to what I was saying earlier. We, we have limited resources, and, you know, we need to look at those areas where we can affect the most people with the dollars we have.
Anyone else?
Can I just, on that, just for Gary now, did I hear correctly that Fermi Lab was looking to work with the City of Batavia on the flow of water through the, say, tributary to the Mahoney Creek?
Yeah, we, we have an easement on Fermi Lab's property, and there is actually a basin in place, Kirk Road, upstream of Mahoney Creek. It was a basin that was designed in the 70s and probably wouldn't be designed that way today. And I'm not sure that I recall water sitting in that basin. So, I think we could, we would need to relook at that basin. And then after they subsequently constructed that, they then did Kirk Road. So, all the winding of Kirk Road that was done in the 80s and 90s, no detention was provided for that, and that drains directly to Mahoney Creek. So, that is a fairly, quote-unquote, easy project to be able to suddenly utilize the Fermi property for additional detention, and hopefully attenuate how the flows go through Mahoney Creek. It's just a matter of, of funding and prioritization.
Thank you.
Alderman Serone?
Off the subject, just a shameless plug for a band, there's a band that is made up of Ward 6 residents that is playing at Rivers Edge Bar and Grill this Saturday night, so formerly known as O'Brien's Pub. So, if any Batavians want to support some local artists, it is from 6:00 to 8:00 this Saturday, August 6th. And, oh, and they are called The Falling Objects.
Anyone else? Okay, that's all we have for other business. So, we'll then go into executive session for the purpose of purchase and sale of real property. I need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by McFadden, to enter executive session for the purpose of purchase and sale of real property. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Should have roll call? We need roll call on.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Otterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Okay, so we are going to go into executive session for the purpose of sale and purchase of real property. There won't be anything to come out of it afterwards. Thank you.